That's January 18, 2016, meeting in the Village Board of Trustees to order at 6:31 PM. The agenda was properly posted. We have a quorum, and we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll take nominations for Chairman Pro Tem for the January 18, 2016 Village Board Meeting.
I'll nominate Alex.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to nominate Alex. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Aye.
Take it away.
It's a long one. Discuss and consider the minutes of the regularly scheduled meeting of the Village Board for December 21, 2015.
Motion to approve as presented.
So, motion is there a second to approve the minutes?
A second, but we just want to make it know that there's no public appearances.
Any discussion? Oh, sorry, number five. Good call. Jumping right in. Alright, so there's a second, there's a motion and a second for the approval of the minutes. Is there any discussion? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstains? Okay. I did miss the number five, so thanks Kyle. Is there any public appearances today? No? Okay. Back to 6B. Discuss and consider the minutes of the regularly scheduled meeting of the Village Board for January 4, 2016.
Make the motion approve.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes from January 4, 2016. Is there any discussion? Hear none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstains? Okay. Number seven, presentations to the board. We have 7A. There's the proposal for two develop, two website developments.
Yeah, they're not here yet, so...
Okay. We'll table them for right now and just move on.
Sure.
Item number eight, unfinished business. Discuss and consider potential trustee and citizen appointments to vacant positions on various Village Board committees and commissions. First one here is ad hoc architectural review. It has one vacant seat, which is typically filled by the President, and one citizen seat to be filled, according to that list. I put my name in as a temporary to fill it. I think I could sit in on those meetings. I don't think they meet that regularly, except for when there's business up in the Commerce Park, and I do plan it to be temporary when the President is elected to...
I don't think that ad hoc architectural needs the President. The President's usually been on there. We kind of went through, there's a couple of these that definitely require the President, so I think it is possible to appoint someone to ad hoc architectural without it being the President.
I couldn't really find that ordinance for that.
Well, it's not in the ordinance, it's actually in the Commerce Park covenants.
Okay.
Was it supposed to be somebody from, official from plan, or is that the citizen from plan?
Let's go on to the next one, because I, yeah, you know, that's, that's right. There's, the one person is supposed to be on plan, and...
So, it's an overlapping committee then, right?
Yeah.
Is basically what it is.
Yeah, so let's go on to the next one.
Okay. 8-2, which is the Community Development Authority.
That doesn't have to be filled by the President.
Does not?
No.
Okay. And Jennifer put her name in to temporarily fill that.
I had also nominated Jennifer. I think she's interested in that, so we can vote her in and surprise her, I guess, since she's not even...
No, she said in her email that she accepted that.
Oh, she would?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we taking these individually, as an individual?
Yeah, why don't we?
So, we need a motion and a second and all that for everyone?
Yep.
Okay, well, I'll move approval of Jennifer Pickle to fill the seat on the Community Development Authority.
Second.
Okay, there's a second. A motion and a second for approval of Jennifer to committee. All in favors, any discussion? No? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Deer, moving on to Deer Grove EMS Commission. There's two trustee seats to be filled.
Yeah, I had asked to remove myself from that, because I'm also a member of Deer Grove EMS, and I just felt it's kind of a conflict to have somebody on a commission level in that position where, you know, sometimes I'm his boss, sometimes he's mine. So, and I asked for John and Harvey, I guess.
I was under the impression, John, you were already on it, because didn't you take over all of Ed's spots?
That was not one of the ones that Pat told me, gave me three.
Okay.
You're on fire, right?
Fire.
Yeah.
Fire, EOC, and PR.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I'll move approval of John and Harvey to fill the EMS commission spots.
One second.
So, you were, sorry, you weren't on Deer Grove?
I had been on there, sort of, because it was hard to get anybody else on there.
So, you're sort of just filling in? Because I don't see, you're like, you're not on...
Yeah, I was sort of filling in.
When Ed resigned his seat, right, Pat was looking for somebody to take over, and chose to have Jeff do it.
Yeah, it's just kind of an awkward position sometimes, though if there's any disciplinary action, so that's kind of why I did that, so...
And again, these are, you're really until...
What's that?
I guess these are really until April, and then we can, the deck can always be reshuffled later, so... Okay, so there's a motion and a second to approve John Williams and Harvey Potter to the Deer Grove EMS Commission. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, I see none. Finance and Personnel Committee.
That has to be filled by the President, and you've got two trustees on there at the present time, so we can't really appoint that one.
Okay. And so, there's really plenty of representation. It's definitely the joint committees we're looking for.
We haven't had a quorum problem with, with that committee.
Okay. Joint Fire Committee, one trustee seat to be filled, two alternate trustees. Can also be filled. I put my name in, just as a fill-in until President's elected and the elections are over.
Is that Ed's seat? Or is that, I'm trying to...
Yes.
That would be your...
Chairman, actually, of that.
Okay.
Meet.
So, it'd be you and Alex. So, it'd be you, you're the chair, and then Alex would, okay.
Long time representative.
Yeah.
Just be a guy.
Okay. Yeah, that's, I'll move approval of Alex.
To approve Alex.
Second.
Alright, so, there's a motion and a second to approve Alex, me, to the Joint Fire Department Committee. Any other discussion?
Do we need to appoint alternates right now, or can we?
We can wait.
You can wait.
Okay.
I think the intent of this was just volunteers and just trying to fill the vacancies so that we're covered until...
Especially the joint.
Until we get through the elections, yeah.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Abstentions, or, no. Opposed? No. And then abstentions? Okay. Let's prove. The rest, we have had no volunteers for right now. It's Ordinance Review Committee. There's a citizen seat to be filled. Parks and Rec also has a citizen Plan Commission. The President fills that seat, as well as a citizen and Zoning Board of Appeals. Was it, did anyone have, anyone to be submitted maybe for the next meeting for any of those committees?
I'll submit for ad hoc, I guess, because I'm on planning, and I'm the only other option there, so if that's the case.
Do you want to go back to ad hoc, then?
Here, I want to go get the...
He's got the sheet.
Yeah.
It's just one board member and one Plan Commission.
Does it say that they have both a Plan Commission and a, or is that a different?
It's worded a little funny, but I think they mean, one of each. It says one representative from both the Village Board and the Village Plan Commission.
Is there any overlap now for Plan Commission?
We don't have the Plan Commission number, because the gentleman who was on the ARC was, is no longer on the Plan Commission.
We have issues with quorum there?
Yes.
With the Plan Commission.
Architectural review.
We have three members, and they all have to show up.
And sometimes one abstains because of...
Conflicts.
Yeah.
So, if you have to have someone from Plan Commission that's a citizen...
Do they have to be a citizen, or is it a...
Just as one board member and one Plan Commission member, so it could be two.
You could double dip it, but you still need a citizen to fill. Okay. Yeah. Okay.
No.
No.
There's five spots to fill, so...
Right, there's five spots to fill.
Kyle, did I imagine, did you say you would serve on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm on planning, and obviously, I'm a board member, so that would take care of both of those steps, and...
But you still need a citizen, there's still a citizen vacancy, yeah.
Then, then there would be.
Then there would be a citizen.
The other way to do it is have, well, you can still do it, have a board member, and then ask someone from planning, a citizen who's on planning, to also sit in on ad hoc. That's kind of what I was looking at, to get the others...
That is the intention.
Yeah.
Yeah, the quorum issue is just a big thing. I mean, when they need to meet, they need to meet, so...
Yeah. And the abstention problem is also there.
Who's on plan, no?
Fred Schultz, according to this list, Fred Schultz, Rob Weiss, and John Russell.
Yeah.
And Phyllis Jones Morris is on plan. On ad hoc, it's Bob Carlson, Mike Hackel, and Jim, I don't pronounce his last name, sorry.
Knutson.
Knutson, okay, thank you.
So, Kyle could be appointed to fill one of the spots.
Yes.
Okay.
It would still be great, probably, to have some, ask someone from planning to also sit.
See if there's a volunteer among those four to do it.
Okay, so, I'll redact my name and ask Kyle to jump in on that, but that's okay.
Yeah, I'll take, I'll take it up with him.
Okay, so, motion to approve Kyle for ad hoc.
Aye.
There's a motion and a second to approve Kyle Brum for the Ad hoc Architectural Review Committee. Any other discussion? None?
Well, it does typically meet in the morning, so I don't know if that's an issue for him.
Yeah, my job's...
Oh, perfect.
He knows his boss.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? None, okay. Move along. Still, we go to 8B. Discuss and consider approving the change of the West Side South Main Street across from Cottage Grove Elementary School to a no parking during school drop-off and pickup times when school is in session.
This was brought to our attention by the principal at Cottage Grove Elementary. He was concerned about the amount of traffic that was backing up on Main Street, and it was sometimes backing up all the way down to the traffic light. So, we did a trial period in December with no parking during pickup and drop-off times on the west side of Main Street, and as a result of that, I sat out there basically for a week watching it at those times, and it did alleviate some of the congestion on the road. Some trucks are too big to pass on the right, but most cars are able to go around, so it made it better. I didn't see any parents totally inconvenienced by this. In fact, it's probably a little bit safer for them to go into the parking lot, pick up their children, and come out that way. I talked to the principal afterwards, and he thought it was a good idea to make that a permanent change. The residents I talked to on Main Street, I stopped at everybody's house and talked to those I could, and they, nobody had any major heartburn with it, because they can still park their vehicles on the street, they just can't have them during the pickup and drop-off times. So, it doesn't totally eliminate it. One of the people that was parking on the west side of that was one of the crossing guards, so she'll have to find a different spot to park, maybe, maybe a bit further south where the other parking, where the other crossing guards park. So, it looked like it was a good fix for that situation that we're running into, and, and so I would recommend it.
I'll make a motion to make that permanent, then.
One second. There's a motion and a second to approve change in the west side of South Main Street across from Cottage Grove Elementary School to a no parking during the school drop-off and pickup times when school is in session. Is there any discussion?
I guess, what do we need for signage, or whatever is that?
I'm sorry.
Signage, or, I mean...
Yeah, we'll have to order some signs and put them on, probably three or four of them.
How long do we think that'll take?
I don't know. Ordering process is several weeks, I think. We would have to amend the ordinance. That's a lawyer question down there.
I think it's just the traffic map. I don't think you have to, the ordinance shouldn't be specifying exact locations in the language.
Lee, do we have to amend the ordinance?
I think that, I think he's right that we don't, nor, I think we moved away from identifying specific spots and just referred to the traffic map, but I can...
Okay.
Check with JJ and confirm that tomorrow.
Great.
The only other question I would have is where the exit, the parking lot, is that right turn only then for exiting? Would that help, or does that matter?
It didn't seem like that was a big problem there. Most people realize, in order to get out of there, they're going to have to turn right, and there's a few that make that left turn, but that didn't seem to be the biggest problem.
Okay.
There's signs there currently, right, that state no parking? So, do the new signs would just state times, or?
No, there's no signs there right now that I know of.
Okay.
On the west side.
West side. Oh, on the other side of this road.
Right.
Because the signs are currently there on the east side, they just, they don't have times on them.
They say no parking anytime, because that's a turn lane there.
So, will the ones on the west side state the times?
They would definitely state the times. It would be probably 7:00 to 8:00 AM and 3:00 to 4:00 PM.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstains? Abstentions? None? Okay, motion passes. New business. Discuss and consider operator license for Alyssa Sampson of Stop, for the Stop and Go on Windsor Avenue. Chief, the recommendation was okay?
Approved, yes.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve Alyssa.
I'll second it. There's a motion and a second for approval for Alyssa Sampson of the Stop and Go. Any discussion? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstains?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving right along. Number 10, reports from Village Boards, Commissions, and Committees. First one is Community Development Authority.
We met last Monday. We had a very healthy discussion on a number of topics, and I will let Aaron fill in more details, but we talked about a grant and loan program for the village and what those objectives might be like. We talked a little bit about the hotel study that was done by Private Party, and a little bit more about whether to engage a retail recruitment company. So, I'll let Aaron fill in the details there.
Yeah, Harvey captured it pretty well. We've been looking at other municipal loan and grant programs in both Dan and Rock County to get some examples of what other folks are doing. Then, we've started the discussion at the CDA. If we were going to have one, you know, that's to be determined, but if we did, what would our objectives be? The plan is to continue that discussion and start looking at what some of the other criteria would be for eligibility and things like that. The hotel study had a few recommendations in it that pertained to the village. One was creating a visitor guide. So, the CDA directed us to talk to the Chamber about that, and it sounds like they're already looking at something similar to that. One was to prepare a gap analysis. That's also something the Chamber did this past year. And the other one was to encourage a cluster of development that would support a hotel, such as restaurants, gas stations. So, the direction from the CDA was to develop some ideas for that. If there's a kind of a predetermined incentive that incentivizes that sort of development, that's the kind of thing we want to start taking a look at in the coming meeting.
So, they asked us to talk to elders on just some general terms of what a hotel incentive would look like.
Something we could potentially use to recruit as opposed to just reacting to something that comes in. And then, the last one, as Harvey mentioned, we talked to a few different companies that specialize in retail recruitment, and the general sense from the CDA was, they were interesting, but just too expensive for us, so that was tabled.
Do you learn anything from the recruitment companies that we could just use in-house, or is it definitely stuff that you need a dedicated person to work on?
I don't know that we learned it from them, but I think just having the discussion. John Hogan, one of our members, had a lot of lists and things that he had access to for contacts that I think we can use. So, well, that was the other direction from the CDA on that. If we're not pursuing these companies, what, you know, steps can we do instead to build upon the marketing that we already do?
It was rather expensive, and even, you know, city size of Sun Prairie, they were talking to one of the same companies, one of the two that we were talking with, and they decided that it was too pricey for them, so...
Part of the problem that they had was that the, the fees were kind of flat fees, no matter the size of the municipality. So, for a big city, it's not that bad, but for a small village like us, it's quite a chunk of change to try to do that.
We might go to work with Ruda Bush on this a little bit, too.
Yeah.
So...
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Emergency Government.
So, we met back on the 6th of January. Continue to have discussions about the tabletop exercise. Totally have that scheduled for March 2nd, pending availability of some of the county professionals that would observe this exercise. And again, the tabletop exercise is a disaster in how we'd respond and communicate with the various parties, whether it's the chief down here, or Fire, or EMS, or County, et cetera.
So, who's representing the village on that?
As far as individuals, citizens, Larry, space in his name, there are some village individuals on there.
Okay.
So...
They're going to be participating in the tabletop?
Kike, and I don't know who the other individual was.
John Russell used to be on it, but maybe he's not anymore.
John what?
John Russell? Is that, maybe he's not anymore?
He's not on there.
Okay.
You know, Larry is, Larry is definitely a Cottage Grove Village resident, citizen. So, that was, that was it.
Public Works.
It's me. I have, we talked, this was in the packet before, so this isn't anything new, but I did photocopy from our recent meeting, is the sidewalk repair policy. JJ did some word edits. I think we asked for some editorial changes to his policy, and he updated it. This is, it's basically in alignment with ordinance 270, part two, that's in our, our plan. So, this is what he's using, is basically his guidelines in the letter that would go out to residents. And then, again, there's the map. The map is dynamic. It'll change and get updated every year as, as he moves around the village, updating and repairing sidewalks as required. So, you've had this before. I just wanted you guys to have it again, in case you got a phone call from a resident, hey, what's this, what's going on, so that you guys had all the information available to you. Obviously, any questions you do get, you know, I always forward them to JJ anyway, so, let's just so you guys are aware of what's going on.
So, if we find something like, when I'm out walking a dog, and I found one that had a two-inch raise on it, just let you know, or?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Every year, we may tackle the worst ones, even if they're not in the planned neighborhoods, because, I mean, there are some bad ones out there.
Yeah, it's one about a 10-year-old neighborhood, okay.
Yeah. Update for Conservancy Court, Marsh. We talked about that also. Most of the information came from the MSA report that was in the, in the packet for Public Works. Basically, the end of action for, the end of December was that MSA prepared and submitted the permits. The DNR received and approved the permit, as well as the Army Corps of Engineers. All that information came back in December. The next step is really to put it out to bid. We discussed the potential of, you know, what are the costs involved, really before making the big formal presentation to the board. It is definitely looking like it's going to be an over $25,000 purchase. So, at this point, we're, they're going to put it out the bid. That's what we asked the MSA and JJ to handle, and then, once it gets back to the committee, we'll go through it, and then we'll make, you know, more presentations, more information to the board. It's about, it's over a week, maybe a week and a half, I think, of work worth of digging out there, as well as removal. And so, that's, that's where it's, it gets a little complicated, because there's quite a bit of work to be done. And then, I think there's some re-seeding of the plantation, the planning, I don't think that's the right term, but they have to redress everything after they leave.
So, the MSA is going to do the RFPs, then? Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Where would the actual, if we move forward the actual project, where would that money come from?
The village. That's part of the discussion that we have to find out. We've got to figure out how much it's going to be. Obviously, it's not a budgeted line item.
Yeah.
And so, nobody planned for it. I think we planned for, in the budget, we did prove the tree removal, that big project, and a couple other little projects, but that's why it's going to come back to the board for where's the money going to come from and how to pay for it.
I think there's about $9,000 in stormwater, in the stormwater budget, so that'd be a likely item, but it's going to probably be way over that, so...
Yeah. Originally, if it was going to be something that it could be done, it would be pick apart the budget, figure out where to get the money, and bring it back to the board and say, hey, these are the funds we're going to kind of acquire from other funds. That's not the case, being the amount of work that's got to be done out there, so... The key kind of hinged on getting, it's after budget season, it's the way the timeline went, but we had to get approvals for the permits before, to take it out the bid. Do the permits expire? Two years? Okay.
They can hold off until?
Till 2018, yeah, or 17, maybe. We'll see what they come in at. So, I have the public works. Good stuff. Utility Commission. Part one is discuss and consider Gaston Road Water Main right-of-way permit in the town of Cottage Grove. So, we had a coupon, and we cashed in our coupon, and Lee visited us and helped us with our right-of-way permit.
Well, it was a big night, because it's been a while since I've been to utility, and someone who's been on the committee for quite a while, first thing he said when he saw me was, well, there must be a problem. Essentially, this is something that I think has, has resolved. What, the, the village submitted a request for a permit to work in the town right-of-way as part of the Gaston Road Water Main project. And the town, the town's response was as if we were opening negotiations, and our feeling was this was a pretty straightforward request that, that there really shouldn't be any negotiations on. And the applicable statute and also the Public Service Commission rules limit how much, you know, there are difficulties between municipalities sometimes, and so they say essentially, if it's, if it's not in the public health, safety, or welfare, then it's a condition that shouldn't be allowed. We've gone back and forth. Primarily, we've been through MSA. They made the original application to the town, and I think we finally have reached a point where we resolved all... They made the original application to the town, and I think we finally have reached a point where we resolved all of the issues. And Mike, I'd open it up for you in terms of, I mean, the packet that was, that you were given, gives you a lot of the specifics, and I won't, if you want to get into those, I'd be happy to talk about them. But essentially, what happened at the utility commission is that we indicated that the village would not do more than a one-year warranty on the work that was being done, that we would put in a bid alternate where the town could pay for a five-year warranty, if that's what they wanted. The work is going to be as good or, they requested that it be as good or better. And the language that's actually in the PSC guidelines says that it's as good, and so we agreed to that. They were asking for legal and engineering fees, and the commission agreed that there should be a cap. Also, that cap would be $10,000. And what was also added was that it had to be in line with the requirements of the PSC. And so I think that it's going to severely limit the amount of legal fees and engineering fees that they can request. And then there was also a bid alternate to mill and surface the north half of the road. So that's about the extent of my engineering knowledge. And I'll turn that over to Mike and JJ in terms of trying to flesh it out a little bit.
So it was, work within the right-of-way permit was written as a petition to work in the right-of-way so that we were staying within the guidelines of, you know, the PSC, Public Service Commission Admin Code, and the statute on that, because it is a condition specifically written for going from one part of a community, the village, to another part and having to cross through a different municipality, which is also defined as a town being a municipality. So, you know, there obviously have been problems with that in the past, so they have a specific chapter on that for water main. And those were the final, as Lee pointed out, the final conditions, after kind of going through it once or twice with the town. And the utility commission recommended that as the final language. The town chair was present at the utility commission meeting. He's at the town board meeting tonight. And so he was able to attend that and, you know, just at least, you know, indicate his support or not for those changes by the utility commission to limit the warranty to one year. And they had asked for five. And to allow them flexibility to, you know, when bids come in and they'll have pricing, to be able to overlay their other half of the road. So the project is to replace the pavement where the water main will be on one side of the road, and they would like to have that potentially renewed on the other side. So that's something they would, indicated they would do on their town budget if the pricing was right. So when we bid it out on that project, we'll have an alternative price that they can use. We have unit prices for shouldering and all the things that they may want to do on the other side of the road, so that'll provide them some guidance on that, make the entire road a little better for everybody, so.
Lee has discussing consider on here. Do we really need to?
No, you really don't. We wanted to bring you up to date, though. And I would say that with the assistance of MSA providing the engineering expertise, that, you know, we were able to present to the town that, look, there are certain things that we can agree to, certain things that we can't, and I think that we've actually worked out, it actually worked out pretty well, and I think everybody could live with what was presented. The utility commission did a good job of going through the different items. So I think that we just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that this had gone on.
Any questions? Harvey was there, too.
It's been summarized pretty well.
Yeah. It went, actually went very well, so. We'll just keep, supposed to do the best we can with any other, anything else that pops up. Another interesting thing, okay, so, one thing I wanted to point out, and then just a general comment. So the summary of Reservoir 2 project, I had asked that be included in the packet. I'm not going to read through it, it's just for you to read at your leisure. It's one of the core capital projects that is part of the increased rates for the water of maintaining our system. So I thought it important you guys kind of see the, I guess, after-action report type of thing. MSA did a nice job presenting it, along with some photographs. If you have any questions, shoot them an email or bring it up, maybe at the next meeting. I'll give you guys times to look at that. But I felt, you know, a significant investment, a good improvement to the village infrastructure, so, to include that in the packet. The other thing that we did is the, where is it? Discussing Consider the Purchase of Treatment Agreement Adjustment Clause. So bigger Tilly submitted us a memo that the Madison Metropolitan Sewer District has raised their rates to us by 4.2%. And they went through all the calculations for the sewer rates for residential commerce and a lot of other type of stuff. And so it was approved that there's going to be a 4.2% increase that's going to be passed on to the residents, basically, to the consumers of who's using the sewer. So that rate increase is a direct result of Madison Metropolitan Sewer District. That was done to maintain the system. And that's all I have for utility commission.
I think we could go back.
Do you want to jump?
Presentations?
Okay. So presentations of the board, which, who's here, which one?
Reese, you want to, want to make introductions? Okay.
Do we need the?
Yeah, we'll take a moment to get the projection screen down and get it set up. So Reese will give some introductions, but it's going to be a 10-minute presentation, and then the board can ask questions afterwards.
Do you have a preferred way that I face when I repeat the board?
Is there a preferred way for him to face?
Probably just alternate, yeah. Keep moving around.
Yeah, we'll rotate it. Okay, we'll wait for the projector to get started here. We should, how about good to go?
Reese may walk through our process and then.
My PowerPoint.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
All right. So as you guys saw in the memo, basically the process was kind of going through, working on some, trying to update some things on the website. It was a little frustrating, so kind of started doing a little research, talking to some other communities, looking at some other communities, and kind of started looking at some different website companies. And through that, through the process, kind of, the village board decided to allocate cable funds that could be used towards a new website project. And that's where I then talked to department heads and kind of got feedback of things that they would want to see from the village website, and just talking to community members and some of their frustrations with not being able to find information on our website or other things. I looked at, you know, what our needs were for a new website, and from that developed the RFP, which was sent to five different companies, and we received four back. We took those to the Public Relations Committee and went back, asked some additional questions to the companies, and then from there, top two companies were selected to do presentations at tonight's meeting. This is Brian with Civic Plus, and I'll kind of let him take it from here.
All right, guys. Thanks, Reese, appreciate it. Get started with the slideshow here. My computer is a little bit cold. Normally, I can say I brought the warm weather with me, I can't say that tonight from St. Louis. So I cover Illinois and Wisconsin for Civic Plus. Been on board for about seven years, so a lot of longevity. Have worked with just so many communities in the area, so. Normally, start the week off in southern Illinois, end up in Green Bay, say Wednesday, Thursday, head down through Illinois in the way later part of the week. So no warm weather, I'm sorry, I tried. Next time, for sure.
Brian, I'll raise my hand when you have about a minute left.
Okay. All right, thanks, guys. All right, so we'll get this going here. It's right about 7:12, and a total of 10 or 15, were we thinking?
10 minutes for presentation, and questions could go ultra-long ago.
Okay, cool. Get this guy going here, it's always the fun part, waking up the computer. All right. So beyond the RFP, we read the RFP, it was very well done, well put together. What were some of the main goals that you guys had for the project that might not have been stated in the RFP? I always like to have that discussion initially. If that needs to be short for tonight, just for time's sake, you know, definitely understand that. But just wanted to open up to you guys, whether it be transactions, engagement, anything beyond the RFP that was really crucial with this project.
I think just more aesthetically pleasing, easy to use, and to engage the public more.
Okay.
Those things are also addressed in the RFP, but that's kind of an overall summary, I think, from Public Relations Committee is what they would like to see.
Okay.
I don't believe there was anything else that wasn't the RFP, it was just general, as Matt just indicated.
Okay, ease of use. Drawing the public business residents, visitors into the site. I saw there's a lot of listings for functionality in the RFP, which is good. It's good to be looking at that for the future, rather than just saying, hey, need a website redesign. There's just so much more to it, so we'll be focusing on that here today. So I'm going to go ahead, this is a PowerPoint, it's not working the way that I want it to. And we'll go ahead and try and take a look at another one here. See if we can get this to act, act right for us. Apologize for the computer hiccups, but I'm optimistic that we can make it through it. Let's try this real quick. So that PowerPoint was regarding design. We'll look at some designs throughout today here and focus that way instead. It looks like we're going to be just fine here as it continues to wake up. And we'll just jump into the main potatoes of the presentation. See the projector is still trying to pick up on the computer and who it is and all that good stuff. Okay. Interesting. Guys, we're going to try one more thing here, and hopefully we can get this to act right. Just for technology sake, do we have a, is there a backup, Reese? In terms of a laptop that we can use in case this one doesn't want to act right for us?
I don't know if ours would be much better.
Okay.
Pretty old. We can try it.
Again, confident that we can get it going. It's acting a little bit funny here on me. See if manual I can get it to advance. It seems to be stuck on that screen. Let's try this here. All right, fingers crossed. Yes, all right, we're good. Thank you for being patient. All right. So again, great to be here, very proud to be here. You'll see, in terms of Civic Plus, I won't focus a lot on the company, you guys have read the RFP response. But just us in a snapshot, 15-plus years longevity here at Civic Plus. 2,100 clients nationwide right now, you see a lot of pins on the map. Again, I cover Illinois and Wisconsin. We're at about the 80-client mark in Wisconsin right now. Primarily due to happy clients in our partnership with the WCMA. And for those who don't know, that's the Wisconsin City County Management Association. So a lot of trust, a lot of longevity in state. At Civic Plus, we have 200 staff, so a lot of resources for this project. We want it to be an amazing project for you guys. So just a lot of sheer resources that we can allocate towards this project. And again, government websites is, that's all we do at Civic Plus, so that's our core specialty. So a lot of the vendors that you guys look like, look at, I've seen, do specialize in just government. We're taking it a little bit further, we'll talk about that coming up here today. But you'll see a lot of longevity and a lot of resources for the project. Wanted to be more than just a website for you guys here today. Looking at some of these points here, just covering the project on a high level. Getting that ROI on the project, allowing residents to transact and conduct real business through the site, so they don't always have to come into Village Hall. Saving time for staff, saving time for the residents, because they can now do more online through the system. Wanted to be an answering service, pushing information out to the public, even if they're not coming back to the website all the time. So the website will push out text messages and emails, alerts, things like that to the public. No matter how good you build it, they're not going to come over a week. So we want the site to be a communications device that pushes information out. Also, citizen engagement, I know there was a term that came up here tonight, which is great. We want to allow the residents to give feedback online, whether that be through a forum, a blog, an online service request, or an online form. So multiple channels to get information in to the village from the public. Again, having the site be more than just a website, but rather a communications tool, any government platform. Of course, project management will be with you guys from start to finish. I've talked to a lot of my clients in very well-run communities that have, like you guys, have been to RFP. And I've asked, how did it go? And they said, went great, you guys kept us on track, held our hand, a lot of best practices and recommendations. So all things that I can't really show very well today, but through calling references, that'll definitely resonate for you guys. Design will be custom for this project, so we'll start with a blank white screen. Design will be custom for this project, so we'll start with a blank white screen. So, keep in mind sites that you guys have seen nationally, maybe your neighbors, you know, maybe it's a corporate site, things like that, we'll take all that feedback, being that it is a custom design. Content development, we'll migrate the content from the Village site and the Police site to the new website. So, that's going to be a hand migration, we're not gonna copy and paste, we're gonna reformat all that text to web-optimize it for you guys. So, that will save a lot of time and reformat that content into more readable content. Training is three days' worth, where we would train staff on permissions, scenarios, modules, editing pages, adding new staff, running reports, you know, it's interactive, it's customized as well, so it's not like we're putting you guys in front of a video or anything like that, it's one-on-one and it's remote training. We also include account managers, so they'll be with you guys from start to finish after the site goes live. Strategy planning, setting up new online payments, looking at how the blog module might work, things like that, they're gonna strategize with you. Think of them as your technology partner. That's really what it is at Civic Plus, it's more of a family. We're a high-touch vendor, so we wanna help you guys in all those areas. Support is 24/7, 365. I will say, we work with Ferguson, Missouri, so we're tested. Ferguson tried and tested, we've been through all that. You never know what's gonna happen, hopefully it never happens here, but we're ready for it, if anything does happen to that scale. And continuous upgrades and enhancements to the system. Last year, we put about $1 million into the platform, I think it was about 120 system enhancements that we provided to the platform. So, we're always touching it, it's always up to date. ADA compliance is a big point, the system will be fully compliant in that regard, we're Section 508, we're actually WCAG, which is 2.0A and AA, that's the next version of 508 compliance, so we'll be compliant there. Online training videos, online training manuals, you don't always have to pay for training, just come and seek that online. Civic Plus Connection is our client sourcing website, where we're taking your feedback on how we can improve the system as well. So, we do hear from a lot of our clients there. Hosting's included, it's a secure data center, fully redundant, and a redesign every four years is included in our pricing as well. So, every four years, the website will redesign itself, and that's a full new custom design. Also, future-proofing, this is a big point that's coming up. We do a little bit more than websites, of course, we do websites, but a lot of folks don't know, we do emergency notifications, we do professional services consulting, and also HR management software as well. So, growing with a vendor, rather than feeling outdated from go-live. So, a lot of longevity there in what we provide. Mobile's just a really important point to consider, I know that was a driving factor of the RFP, and that's great to see. We're seeing that 58% of US citizens own smartphones, 42% own tablets. I would imagine that 42% is a little bit higher, especially on the weekends. So, mobile, very important. Kind of a fun slide, who's using mobile? Where are you using it? Laying in bed, spending time with family, you know, in the shower, in the bathroom, mobile is everywhere, so just such a great factor to consider. And I would say, when you guys are looking at other vendors and considering, look at everything, look at all the modules, the calendar, the online forms, and make sure all those pieces of technology are mobile-friendly all the way across the site. Responsive design can be a key factor, taking all that mobile feedback and putting that into a responsive design that'll wrap and stack according to any device that you're on, and that's gonna create that positive user experience. And just looking at some of the modules here, calendaring, a lot of functionality, being able to select a calendar category, you'll have your events that you can click on, you'll have a day view, sort by week, sort by month, you can search, you can add this to your iCalendar and follow it on your Outlook or whatever you use, Google, so you don't miss that, and you can opt-in to calendar updates as well. So, just a lot of functionality within the calendar, finding that people want a strong community calendar, it's still a challenge. How we doing on time?
I didn't count the initial portions.
Okay, appreciate it.
Two and a half minutes.
Okay, appreciate that. Sending information out, I mentioned the website will broadcast and send notifications out. Resident would opt-in with an email, they could sign in with a cellphone number after they type their email, and receive texts or emails for any of the campaigns that you guys wanna allow for online, so jobs, bids, agendas being posted to the site, alerts. So, now the website is pushing information out to those who sign up for certain categories on a category-by-category basis. It's not an all-or-none, it's a customized opt-in. And the website will automatically send this out as you guys are adding content to it. Brief example of future-proofing, it's one thing to talk about it, it's another thing to show it, but we have a similar solution to Constant Contact called Civic Send that will tie into our newsletter solution. So, you'll actually auto-archive messages into an area and then be able as staff to create the graphical newsletters that are also mobile-friendly, and if you had the content and the images in mind and kind of what you wanted to have in there in terms of text, you could create this in about two minutes. It's all drag-and-drop. So, in communities where newsletter has become popular and diminished because it was hard and cumbersome, now we can kind of bring that to the forefront again when you guys are ready. So, Civic Send, we don't have it included in our proposal for you, but I wanted to show it as something to consider for the future, and we want you guys to have an amazing project, so if you feel in the future, or from the get-go, that this is something you need, just let us know. Request management, another big trend, taking online forums. We'll take it a little bit further at Civic Plus, rather than an online forum that just comes in with an email notification, we have a full management area with mapping, reassignment, escalation, work orders, canned responses, associating requests, of course, the mapping and the history, so just a lot more robust. Okay. Online forums with e-commerce capabilities, again, using the site as a transactions tool. New modules, I saw Agenda Center was important for you guys. A module is included to be able to create an agenda within the system electronically with a template, dragging agenda items into a pre-built template to save time. So, this is one of our big ones at Civic Plus, I do wanna mention, it's here. We'll migrate three years' worth of agendas into it for you guys, and then train you how to either upload agendas or use the full module to build that agenda electronically within. Big time saver for the future. Resident dashboard, being able to customize how they view the site. And Community Voice to help with engagement, this is a screenshot from Middleton, so Mike uses it or put it in place to be able to take resident feedback on certain topics like infrastructure and environmental improvements and things like that. Content management, very easy to use, very friendly to look at, and it's all drag-and-drop. So, essentially, staff can say, you know what, we wanna grab FAQs, they would grab this with their cursor, drag it in, this'll light up, they could let it go, and it would be in that spot. You wanna edit content, you would double-click in this content area, it'd light up like that, and you can start typing within. So, very, very easy to use, very flexible, between all the different items that you can drag in to the page templates, if you didn't like that picture there, you can move it to the top, you can move this text, it's all drag-and-drop, very intuitive, very flexible, very quick. And then, all the modules are very easy too. We'll train, again, but you can add event, I mean, it's pretty intuitive.
You can wrap up, Brian.
All right. So, here we are.
Thanks. Any questions from board members?
Brian, real quick on the editing features of that, I'm assuming that we have, or the system has, ability to allow certain members of staff to do certain things and disallow them to do certain things. Is that correct? So, you have a tiered approach, maybe in administrative rights, or is that?
Oh, yeah.
If you're an administrator, you're administrator.
No, absolutely, good question. Full user-admin rights, so author, editor, publisher, view-only, site admin, so you have five roles. And then, within those roles, you can assign staff to be able to update certain pages or go into certain modules, like the calendar, and maybe only the Police area of the calendar. So, you can segment really anywhere they can go and what they can do.
Very good.
Great question.
Is there any size limits or concerns regarding uploading?
We have, right now, 25GB of storage included. I wouldn't think of it as a limit, a lot of folks that I see with other vendors have 1 to 2GB within. So, you guys will be really, really fine into the future with all that, to be honest. And then, if you were to approach that, our staff would let you know and put a plan in place to archive or purchase more space. So, that's how that would work. It's more of an audit point.
Brian, what about hosting? Is this hosted?
It is.
Yeah. At Civic Plus?
So, we would, as your vendor, we would host for you guys. We work with a data center that has redundancy in, it's located in Kansas City and the back of it's Phoenix. So, fully redundant, let's see if we can get this to come up. Backups, redundancy, rollover, that's all taken care of by Civic Plus. So, hosting, maintenance, support, upgrades, and the redesign that occurs every four years would all be built in to what we call the annual fee, which is this fee right here. So, it's really an all-inclusive of all your annual services, enhancements, maintenance, support, account manager, hosting.
Okay. And do you have a track record of X number of days, years, or whatever, that the system is hosted, is up?
Correct.
In other words, there may be, a tornado comes through and takes out power, and I'm not sure if you have emergency backup systems onsite or however it works, but that's, do you have that kind of data available?
So, we're 99.7% redundancy uptime.
Okay.
And I sent a couple agreements to Reese, one was for a single-year, year-by-year option, and the other was for the multi-year plan. So, there's two, and within each agreement, there's an SLA plan. So, if we don't meet that 99.7, we'll actually credit you guys. So, that holds us accountable and strives to strive for excellence, and that is laid out in the agreement as well.
Brian, when you're talking about agendas, does that also include adding minutes then to those agendas after meetings are included?
Yes, it would.
And what about posting of packets of information? Is that an issue at all? And what if you had a hypothetical person who wanted to download that and print it out, is that an issue from the site?
No, it would not be. Let's see here.
You have to have color ink, though, if you actually want to come up with color.
You had to put something in there.
You have to type in February.
Here go the weeks. So, just for example, in Amory, beautiful site, small community. Let's see if they're doing packets. You'll see the Agenda Center, now this one just has the agendas. We can go over to some.
There is a column for minutes there, so.
Correct.
Oh.
Yeah, you'll have minutes column, you'll have a media column, and then, once you get over to the agenda, you'll have a full packet download option as well. So, they're all there, I'm just trying to show you guys, but yes, short answer is yes.
And Brian, through the notification, people can sign up for a particular topic, even a keyword, is that, and they'd be notified when those items come up on an agenda?
Through the Agenda Center, it will be the agenda itself for that Board or Committee for the notification. They can search by keyword. If you're looking to do a kind of more of a keyword, that would be more an RSS feed-type item, but you'll see the Agenda Center, it's searched by word or phrase, and then the notification would be the entire agenda. So, we don't take it that far, notification keyword on the agenda, not to say that we wouldn't ever, but just right now, we currently don't. So, you'll see here, trying to find one, some of them have the download with full packet option, I'm just not seeing one that does here right now.
But it would be on that dropdown underneath, just click on download, and those are your options.
Yeah, and we're in 2016 now, so why don't I see if I can go back to 15, real quick here.
Reese, did you end up getting an email from the other?
I don't think so. The other puts their packets on.
So, we're actually stood up by the other company at this point, so we can take, we have more time now.
Okay. A question for Matt, I guess, why are you looking at the website we have now, so what are the costs involved with that? Because obviously, all those are coming out of village budget, not the cable TV package. How much are we paying now for that hosting?
Basically nothing.
Basically nothing.
Yeah.
Do we have software here that we're using to make the edits, or what are you?
It's all online.
It's all online.
It's an online, kind of like this, okay, so that's great, so there's no software cost that we're gonna be banning.
Mm-hmm.
I had one right here. I have something not coming.
Yeah, currently, right now, everything has to be updated through Internet Explorer, and it's just, it's very timely to have to do any updates. I mean, Sean and I probably spent, what, 20 minutes today putting a job posting on as a website, and you have to go back, look at the live site, see if it's right, if it's not right, go back to the website portal, like, try to fix it, if you don't fix it, you go back, and it's kind of this back-and-forth game all day.
And it's very, very confusing.
Yeah.
With the ability to upload documents and stuff, would we, I think some areas, would we still use that Ecode place for the ordinances, or can we save money by shifting that over here to?
That's completely separate.
Do we have to host on that Ecode, or I guess?
Well, Ecode is, it's ordinance management, just posting it onto the website is just one portion of what they do.
Okay. So, it may not be worth shedding that.
Yeah, I don't think we could, but, I mean, we can look into what the options are.
It would be up to you guys.
Yeah.
Yeah, fully up to you.
Do other committees do ordinance?
Yeah, a lot of folks that have an ordinance solution will leave it in place. Maybe it's the search functionality or the reminders, there's, obviously, there are specialists in just ordinances, so it probably does more. Ours would be more of a document repository, so if you wanna upload a PDF and do a chapter-by-chapter basis of the PDFs, and then have clickable links throughout a table of contents, that's more how it would work with ours. So, it's really up to you guys. And the project manager could always make a recommendation.
So, to clarify, you said three years of agendas and minutes. Is there an option to go ahead further, or do you give that information to kind of get finalized through staff to get uploaded on that?
Yeah, great question. So, as part of the project, as part of the proposal, we'll migrate up to three years' worth of agendas and minutes. We can do more if needed. Typically, we'll do three for our clients and train how to upload others, or if you want us to do a mass upload into another area, so you have three years' worth in the Agenda Center, and then you're using more of an archive area of the website to mass-upload documents from there. So, they're still on the site, they're still accessible, they're just not in this module. The reason we do three is every agenda is custom-named, so this is actually a big undertaking to do three years' worth of minutes in agendas for all boards and committees. Some of our clients have 30 boards and committees. So, yeah, we can train you how to upload more in here, or we can say, here's a batch for 2012 or 11, and we'll just put them in this folder, so they're still on the site, just not in this directory. That would be, again, up to you guys as well.
Anything else for Brian?
Do you guys wanna see some example sites briefly?
Sure.
Yeah, we have time.
Okay. Now that the computer's acting right. Seen some really light sites these days, having them be very portal-ish, you'll see some nice elements where the navigation will scroll down, it'll kind of revert down to the bottom and stay there. Really strong menu structure, call these mega menus, so they're very service-driven, your links, your initiatives, and your navigation within the dropdowns. Again, mega menus coming into place, just cross-promoting information. In Amory, site's getting a lot of attention right now in Wisconsin, especially just really, really good use of images in Amory. That background's gonna auto-rotate, okay? See the icons driving residents to the key areas. See the icons driving residents to the key areas. They have their news in their calendar, and their initiatives at the bottom of the site. Again, fully responsive. So, you'll see, you know, I'm on what would be a cellphone-sized device right now, and the site is still fully responsive. Bayside's getting a lot of attention in Wisconsin as well. The site's search is going to be predictive, so as residents type into it, it'll predict what they're trying to search for. Really like their news here at the bottom as well. I know engaging came up. Rather than just a link of information, now you have an image, a lead-in, a read-on. So, just going to kind of draw the public into some of those areas. Doing some cool things like week-at-a-glance calendar as well, keeping residents coming back to the site, social media feeds, just nice flexibility to embed different things in the sites. And then, we're kind of poking around in Sun Prairie as well, so just so many clients right in the area here. And by the way, we hold regional trainings and user groups as well. We just had one in Bayside, so a lot of resources for Civic Plus to be in the area, supporting our clients, making sure everyone's content and comfortable with all the functionality.
The board members want to see others in the area, Wanakee and Manona, as well as Sun Prairie. Are there any others in Dane County?
Condamawak is somewhat close.
Didn't you mention Middleton?
Middleton, correct. Trying to think of others. I think that's about it. Waukesha's in development, you know, kind of close to you guys, so.
Maybe this was a question that Alex was kind of asking, but is the board and staff interface linked with this, or is this completely separate?
I guess I'm not, what do you mean by that?
For logging in and looking at upcoming agendas, or if somebody had an email, it gets linked into this separate system?
An email? I don't know. I'm not sure what you're asking.
I'm asking, is this strictly public interface, or is the board and staff interface linked with this connected?
So, is there, is there a protected site that's just for internal stuff? I don't know that it would be.
Well, I mean, just as staff, we could, you could have, board members could have certain user admin rights to update certain areas of a page if it was agendas or, or what.
I know what you mean, probably, I don't know what you would use.
I don't think we'd use it that. So, we get information via Microsoft, via email comments.
Good point.
I guess the question is, is that going to be, is that applied?
I'm not, I mean, that's up to you guys. I'm not sure what you would need to update.
I mean, if you put the packets up there, I mean, there's definitely bandwidth issue. When you send a joint email with all these packets, which is nine megs, times two sometimes to the group, that bandwidth building, now you upload it once, we just pull it down to the residence, so. But that's, but that would be public, it'll be on the public side of the website. I don't know that it's all part of the.
I mean, our packets are all public rep, I mean.
It's all open-rented.
Yeah.
Well, that email done could just have a link to the site, rather than the.
Yeah.
So, obviously, the photos are a big design component. I assume you're relying on the client to give you those?
It's a great question. Yes. However, if you guys don't have the quality of photos that you like, we can lean on our designers for stock imagery. So, there's things you can do with background images in terms of stock photography, flowers, things like that at the time, where then you guys could come and upload your own photos in summer to it, if you'd like. So, a lot of our banners, clients will change out these photos on a seasonal basis, and that's something that we'll train how to do as well. But we have thousands of stock images that can be used. If you want to show, you know, picture of a girl on her cellphone or something like that, you know, looking at the site mobile, we have stock images of that to help you guys.
I'm going to kind of follow up on Kyle's question, because I think I might have, so if you're secretary for a committee, would we, as a trustee, and this might be a decision that we would have to make, if you're secretary for a committee, could we upload the minutes to that committee meeting? If we knew how, if we had that authority?
I guess I don't, I don't see why not.
Okay. Was that what you were asking, Kyle?
Yeah, kind of along the lines, but also kind of asking if there's an email platform through the system, I guess, is the way to look at it.
Versus for Microsoft 365, if we use live, you know, Office 365.
Do you offer an email platform?
We recommend Google, or Office 365, or, you know, maybe an IT firm that you're working with now currently. The website will send the notifications through the notify me if you want to set up an internal account for just agendas, where, you know, our server would send out a notification that the agenda's been posted to, maybe an internet or private area, you know, you could use that as well within an internet setting.
If a village resident goes on to pay their water bill, who's responsible for that security?
So, the security would be through our PCI compliant vendor, which is Heartland Payment Systems. Pretty big shop. I think they process billions per year.
Does it have to be that?
That provider? If it's going to run through our online forms system, it would have to be through Heartland. If it's just any sort of a water bill payment that you guys currently have, or have sought out, or have thought of, we can work with any vendor. It just wouldn't tie into the online forms module. Okay? It would just be a link, or we could embed their payment area portal within the website. So, there's a lot of flexibility.
Will that work out?
Yeah, it's really up to you guys. You can use a blend of your vendors versus Heartland and.
All right. Thanks a lot.
All right, guys. Thank you. Appreciate it.
We'll be in touch.
Okay.
Thanks, guys. Now, we'll never get it again.
I think we're back to our.
Yeah, well, is there any other discussion? John, you said you had four return?
Yeah, we can discuss maybe this page here.
Okay. That's the part two of the packet?
Yeah. Reese, we're discussing this, this portion, if you want my mind to turn back.
Come back, come back!
Reese was the staff person that pretty much took this on for us, so. But we did have a couple good discussions at Public Relations Committee, reviewing all four proposals. There was a pretty clear top two, and that was Civic Plus and Revise. However, Revise was supposed to be here at 6:30 tonight, and up until even right now, they haven't even sent an email or anything to Reese, so, you know, we don't know what's going on there. They were also asked to give us examples of contracts, and they did not respond to that, but we did get confirmation from both finalists that they were going to be here. So, but we were happy with the references from Civic Plus, obviously, of presence in the Dane County area, and they met all the requirements of the, our request for Anything else, Reese?
No, I mean, it was, I talked to quite a bit of communities about the different websites, and actually, the RAC supervisor from Manona came out and showed me the backside of Civic Plus, of what they use, and, you know, as he said, it really is the, you know, you just drag it and drop it. But really, both, both companies that were the finalists had really good reviews from the communities that I talked to, and I tried to make sure that I didn't just talk to the references that they listed, because if they're listing a reference, hopefully, they're listing a good reference. So, I tried to make sure that, I just looked at all the communities I could and tried to find ones that were, you know, in Wisconsin, that would be probably similar to us, and just called them and asked how their experiences were. So, yeah, that would kind of be.
What's the next step?
Well, the contract, so Civic got us a couple examples, formats of their contract, which Lee's briefly looked over. We were, we actually were not planning on any final approval tonight, because we didn't have the other firm's contract in hand, but it doesn't appear that, you know, I'm not sure if the board would want to consider them at a later date or not, but we would still want time to review Civic's contract in the closed session. So, if everything's okay with that, seemingly, we could come out of closed session, discuss it open, and approve that contract, but we could also wait until February 1st. Yeah, just so you know, I did not, I gave it a municipal scan, which means that I put it into my notebook and kind of glanced at it. I did not want to put a lot of time into it, because I wasn't sure if the other company was going to be getting it to us or not. So, we could, we can talk, talk about it in generalities in the closed session, and, you know, what the parameters are to be negotiated, and then make a final decision at the February 1st meeting.
Is another option, we can just push it to have Public Relations figure it all out, and then present the final verdict? Or do we want to go through it all here?
Should be discussed and closed.
We can close, okay. Close here.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, basically, the Public Relations was reviewing the proposals for, you know, completion, really looking at them in detail, making sure they've met everything that we asked for, looking for clarifications, and then forwarding the top two to be, for presentations, interviews at the board.
I guess one thing I did notice in the packet is that the bid said it was good for 60 days from October 5th. Is this still valid?
It is. We're fine.
Okay.
So, if we made a decision on February 1st, we're good?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I mean, some of the technicalities, I'm sure, have gone over on who's doing what on some of the uploading, and if that should be added into the proposal or not. Like, the three-year thing that we talked about tonight, if a staff member's going to get trained and upload that, or if we should add that to the proposal?
Yeah, I mean, that would be something, right, that, that would be talked about.
Yeah. I mean, would the board want more than three years?
I think all of it should go on there. It doesn't mean that that company has to do it necessarily, but who is going to step up and handle that task, and kind of what that looks like is important.
From how far back?
Do you do all the committees, or just the board, the village board?
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of the best.
I think, I think you're right. And the more information you give out, the better, and these are deserving of stuff back, but is all the committees, is it worth all that?
I don't think three years is long enough, but I don't, I guess I don't know what the magical number is of.
How long, Brian, how long do they stay on? So, it'll be three years back, but once going forward, do they all stay going forward?
A year.
Okay.
I guess, how long has, has the meetings been taped?
Middle of last year, I think.
No. It's way longer than that.
Oh, they've been taped? I mean, I was thinking the YouTube channel, sorry. But they're all.
It's been a while.
I mean, is that be a good cutoff point, maybe?
Probably. Could see these transferred videos.
Right. Exactly.
VHS? Data?
I think it would be safe to say that the quality of some of the tapes would leave a little bit to be desired. I mean, I've actually watched them to, well, not all of them, but some, and for one reason or another, and it's, it's only been fairly recently that, you know, some of the issues with the microphones have been solved. I mean, you would be, if I'm talking, and then I turn away, suddenly, like, you know, you can't hear me, or there's someone's rustling papers and stuff. So, I'm not sure how far back we'd go, and what kind of quality we'd get. That's something to take, Andrew might be able to do a better deal.
And there are statute statutes as well, that we might have to take into consideration.
Are you wanting agenda packet minutes and tape for all of these?
No, I was kind of looking for a cutoff date, and I thought maybe that the tape, like, if you said 2003 for taping or something, maybe you would go from that point forward. Just trying to pick a date that makes sense for entering the stuff online, I guess. So, I was just asking.
Is there a limit to how much space you allow for that? I mean, that's 13 years of tapes, plus packets, plus minutes, plus.
Yeah, there's 25 gig, so I don't know what that looks like.
So, is YouTube being used for tapes?
Just recently, though.
Just recently.
And I think maybe like six months back, or something like that, where you loaded them, you know, three to six months, I think, of meetings.
Yeah, it's really up to you guys. In fact, the data will go a long way, in that if you're using YouTube for media, you know, that'll be in YouTube, so.
Is there a typical practice on how far back?
Normally, three years is what we're seeing right now. So, we study all the clients, 2100, and three years was the best practice for them. And then, from there, if you want to have them online, you would have them, you do a bulk upload into the document center of the website, where you can grab them all at once and drag them all into the folder. So, they're still accessible, they're still there. It's just a little bit, it's more of an archive view, rather than a, you know, three-years current view. It's up to you guys on how you want to do it, but three years would be the best practice.
Kyle, certain financial records have to be kept for seven years.
That's what I was kind of thinking, because my record retention is seven.
Yeah. Certain financial records are seven, but most.
And there's.
Certain doesn't packets would be much less.
I mean, we still have.
No, they're forever.
Forever.
Are they?
Yeah.
We still have records, they just want to all be online.
That's what I was saying. I mean, we don't throw away tapes, we don't throw away packets, we don't throw away minutes, so we always have them, which, you know, if somebody was dying to watch it or read them, they're always doing the record requests.
I think three years seems reasonable to me. It's best practice out of communities. That's probably.
It's a good place to start. I think 1000 was a good place to start. I think three years is fine. If we want more, you address the questions, right?
Well, you get trained on how to do it, too. That's the other thing. So, if you need another year or something like that, then, you know, carve out time for staff to do that.
I mean, about how much time would it take, you know, if someone's fully trained to, if it was just one, one agenda, the minutes, and a packet for one meeting? Can you ballpark how much time that one would take?
Probably three or four minutes per, per agenda.
Yeah.
Total.
Yeah.
For all of us. Should say four minutes for everything.
I mean, that could really add up, one, one person's time.
Yeah, I agree.
Again, if they're going into the Agenda Center, though, if it's a upload into documents or that's a, you can grab all files and drag it.
Okay.
So, and that's, you know, real fast, so.
I think a lot of the minutes we have are in Word. Do they have to be turned into a PDF first?
They don't, no. In the system, you can convert to PDF, too, on upload, if you want, if you want.
Common practice is three in retention, that covers that, I guess. That's what I was just trying to get to the bottom of, so.
Well, as time takes on.
document center, that's a, you can grab all files and drag it.
Okay.
So, and that's, you know, real fast.
I think a lot of the minutes we have are in Word. They have to be turned into a PDF first?
They don't, no. In the system, it'll convert to PDF too on upload if you want, if you want.
Common practice is three in retention. That covers that, I guess. That's what I was just trying to get to the bottom of, so.
Well, as time takes on, then it turns into four, five. You go back three, your snapshot's back three, and then you go.
And then the other question I had, just is, is there any sort of marketing rolled into this to kind of alert the public that a change has been made in a direction? Is it through here or is that separate?
I guess we could, we could talk about that at Public Relations. We can use cable funds now for marketing purposes, so we can look into options for that.
I'm assuming you take over the same domain?
Who do you?
So the address and everything, nothing changes.
Correct. Unless you guys want it to.
We have, you changed our email. No, not our website.
We have, we have three websites. There's the village, there's, PD has their own domain, I think. Does Parks have their own?
No.
No.
Oh, okay.
You're not going, you don't want your own out of this?
Everyone else.
Okay. Doesn't it look like we don't have any?
There's a civic, I mean, Thomas Park has one that we debushed, but that's separate.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, guys. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the impatient as well.
I had no problem.
Yeah, don't worry.
We did.
Thanks, Reese.
Moving on, number 11. Reports from village officers. Kyle Vroom.
No report.
Jack Hendrick.
No report.
Jennifer's not here. Harvey Potter.
Just a couple of, of things regarding winter in general. Just for citizens, remember that there is alternate side parking restrictions from December 1st to March 15th. So if you're parking on the street, remember to park on, on even days, park on even, and odd, park on odd. And also, the recent snow event reminded me that I hadn't made my, my annual comment about making sure sidewalks are shoveled and treated if they're icy. There are village ordinances requiring that they be shoveled or cleared 24 hours after the event. Also, our Public Works Department does work very hard to keep our streets clear, and please don't blow snow or shovel snow out into the road. Keep it off to the side as much as possible. Like I said, they work really hard, and it's very frustrating for, not only for them but for other citizens when they have to drive through snow that has been pushed back out into the street. Thank you.
Yep. I think, just one, if I may, another one is adopt a fire hydrant. I know they also walk around and they, my fire hydrant was dug out, and I'm not sure if it was the, the kids I hired that did it or if the village came through and did it. But if you have a fire hydrant, take a few extra moments and clear it, and so that's, that's usually also something that you added last year.
Thank you.
Okay. John Williams.
No report.
I skipped the meat, so I go by the meat now. I guess I have no report. Attorney Lee Boucher.
No report.
Administrator Matt Gize.
Just one comment about if you, if you're a chair of a committee and you happen to have a, a meeting coming up next week that you have it the Friday before, the meeting, if you have an agenda to Deb and myself by noon on Friday at the latest, so we get, you know, we get it posted, just a, just a reminder, we had, we had to scramble a bit for a police commission meeting, and so, you know, just a, just a reminder about that. Anything else, Deb?
Minutes.
Oh, and then, and then minutes from, from those committees, too?
I'm not getting minutes from a lot of committees, and I think it's getting, I don't know if it's not being decided upon that there would be a secretary at each meeting, but there really needs, there really supposed to be a record of every meeting that's going on as well. So those need to be taken by someone and approved and draft, and then sent to me as well, so I can cover them.
At least a motion, you know, at least a.
They don't have to be detailed.
Yeah. I mean, at least a motion of what happened. A sentence or two summary.
And who's there? Because that's how I pay the committee people, too.
We have examples of, of very concise minutes and wordy minutes. So if we needed examples, we'd be happy to give you some. But it's, it's important, it's important that there be at least some record of attendance and motions and approvals so that we can kind of track some of this.
That's it.
And the chairs, and the chairs and the secretaries get paid an extra $5 a meeting, so you could throw that in there as an incentive.
Do you want to send an email out to the delinquent parties and say, hey, you're missing what stuff, so you were specific? Or that you think everybody knows what they need to be doing, and you're reminding us?
Just a reminder, I think people, I think people know. Yeah.
All right.
And then, I guess, one more. The carpeting has been ordered. It'll be not just the carpet, but the, the rubber baseboard area. It'll be similar to this in the sense that it'll, the carpeting will be darker gray, and then the baseboard will be another off of that. It'll be gray as well, just a little bit different. And do we get a scheduled date or time for that yet?
This week, Thursday, Friday.
Okay. All right. So we'll have new carpeting for the next meeting.
But this week, because Parks is down into.
Is it coming in, well, with our budget wise?
Yeah. It's a, a little bit under.
Okay.
We may even have enough after, potentially for chairs, too. So we'll see.
I like the tape.
Can I, can I keep my.
You can, sure.
Only if you put red tape on his new chair now. You don't know where to sit. Thanks, Matt. Director of Planning and Development, Aaron Ruth. Chief, you down there, Eddie?
We did our police commission interviews for lieutenant last week, and we'll have final interviews this week and select someone for the job.
Excellent. Takes care of that. Communications and miscellaneous business. Discuss and consider approval of vouchers.
Motion to approve vouchers as presented.
I'll second it. So there's a motion and a second to approve the vouchers as presented. Any discussion, questions? Hear none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Abstentions? Whoever's pronounced abstained. None. Okay, good. Correspondents, do we have any? No mail. Future agenda items, anything for the?
We should finalize the website.
Website.
Design contract. Can't think of anything else? Do you know, you know Deb or I if you have any, any items that you'd like on agenda?
Citizen appointments.
Any citizen appointments, if you have any, submit them then.
Yeah, remember that in the la, in the last set of ordinances that were adopted, we talked about that being a written submission.
Along with the background?
Right.
Well, that's kind of an, well, yeah, it is an ongoing thing. If you have a seat that's empty for 60 days, I think the ordinance said, submitted in writing to the next agenda. Okay, so item number 13. Closed session. The village of Cottage Grove Village Board will enter into a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851E deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public property, investing of public funds, conducting of other specific business where competitive and or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Negotiate terms for potential development in tid number six by Horizon Development Group Incorporated, and negotiate terms of proposed website vendor contracts. And pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Status and update, and discuss various legal matters relating to LaRue Fields versus Cottage Grove 13-CV-125P.
Second.
So that's the motion and the second. That's a roll call vote?
Yes.
Calvin.
Aye.
John Hendrick.
Aye.
Alexis Sishen.
Aye.
Aye.
John Williams.
Aye.
And we're in closed session.